...a change to the policy. And we can vote that, but if there's a change to a policy.
Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, November 13th. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two, public input. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak this evening? If you could just state your name and your address.
Jill Congdon, 298 High Street, speaking on behalf of the Southbridge Elementary PTA. I just wanted to thank everyone for supporting our Schwanz fundraiser. Unfortunately, I apologize for the very long lines to pick up the Schwanz fundraiser. The company Schwanz has taken full responsibility of this event in making it not very fun for the parents and family members who came to pick up their orders. Any complaints and concerns or orders that were not processed properly can be forwarded to Paul at Schwanz at 860-456-1053. On a positive note, it was amazing how many parents, family members, and members of the community actually did stand in the two-hour-long lines, all in support of these schools. Our next PTA meeting is tomorrow, November 14th, at Eastford Road School in the library at 7:00 PM, and I invite everyone to come and attend. Our next fundraiser will be Pizzeria Uno Dough Razor. The dates will be December 11th and 12th at Pizzeria Uno on 100 Charlton Street in Sturbridge, Mass. And you can pick up any of these certificates for the Dining for Dough. Bring it in to Pizzeria Uno, and the Southbridge Elementary School will be given 20% of everyone's order. Tickets can be found at any of the elementary schools. They'll also be left in the library and throughout different places around town if anyone is interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Leanne Payt, 281 Marcy Street. The following statement is from the school's website. "Southbridge Public Schools is a diverse community of learners in which students, teachers, administrators, parents, and other stakeholders form a partnership to assure each child achieves quality education in a safe, supportive environment with..." Excuse me. "...we are committed to achieve an academic excellence embracing cultural diversity, development, personal integrity, install and instilling responsible citizenship and promote long-life learning." I have to admit, I laughed tonight when I read that, and this is the reason. I want to know where the quality of education is when this district had a speech pathologist servicing these children that has not held her license for 10 years. Where's the partnership when a member is sitting up on this panel can make a remark to another parent in the district saying, "I," me and me, can be sued for defamation by that pathologist? Where is the safe and supportive environment when our children are being assaulted by other children? When a school administrator and/or school staff members can make inappropriate remarks about a child's parent in front of that child? Or call a child a retard in front of a class full of children? So like I said, I laughed when I read the district's vision statement. And I'll continue to hold this district accountable for the education of not only my child, but the rest of the children in this district. This, these remarks cannot be made in front of children. Maybe in the privacy in office, fine. Privacy of your home, fine. Do not make a remark in front of my child about me or my personal life. I will not tolerate it from this district at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Please state your name and address.
Laura LaBoye. My son attends the high school, and on Thursday afternoon, he was assaulted pretty bad. He does have a concussion. I do have medical records saying he was. I had to call the ambulance myself. Where has this gone? I don't know. Who's taken action on this? I don't know. Alls I've asked for was some answers, and I have not received any of those. The principal is nowhere to be found. Mr. Haley was out on a conference. I have tried to notify all the school committee members. I hopefully have all gotten, you know, the emails. Have I got much response? A couple. But my son doesn't even want to go back to school. Today I brought him back to the doctors, and he still has blurry vision. I personally have to go file criminal complaint tomorrow in court. He's scared to go back. There's a lot of bullying. It's not fair. This place is supposed to be safe for our children. I, I don't know where else to go. What else do I do? You know, pull him out of the district? I work in town. It's very hard to have your child go out of school out of district. Is this probably the proper place for him right now? Probably not. But, you know, with three little children, it's not easy to pull your kid out of district. But I need to get some answers because it's not fair. There's a lot of kids getting hurt up there, and this is not safe at all. No one has it, I mean, there's, there's videotapes up there. Somebody's got to know something. This really needs to be taken care of. This is a major issue. This is safety. He has a concussion. Who's reliable for these bills? The ambulance bill? You know, the doctor bills? Me? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening who's from the public who'd like to speak? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number three, meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Domingo.
Present.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mr. Lazzo.
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Dr. O'Leary.
Present.
Mrs. Principay.
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, approval of minutes for the regular school committee meeting, October 29th to 2012. Do I have a motion? Thank you. I have a motion by Mrs. Principay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a second by Mrs. McLaughlin. Is there any corrections, errors, changes to the minutes? Anyone? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to point out is on the agenda, it states that we are approving the minutes of October 29th, but the meeting was actually from the 23rd. So just so we're aware of that. The second thing that I would like to show on the minutes, page two, agenda item number 12. First line, vote to approve a donation of $200 to Charlton Street School for the school's support drive-by. Maybe just remove "by." And I believe I had a couple more. Page three, agenda item number 13. In the minutes, there were 11 files that were referred to. Those are the, the new policies that we want to be voting in and have our first, second, and third readings. I had gone back to the agendas for our first readings as well as the second reading, and on the minutes as well as on the agenda for the October 23rd meeting, there was number 12 missing, which refers to the Community Use of School Facilities File ECG-R. So that needs, I think, to be added to the minutes and perhaps to the agenda from our last meeting. It's on tonight's agenda. Our tonight's agenda seems to contain all 12 policies that you're looking to have voted in, but there's just that one with the Community Use of School Facilities that I think was missing, both on the agenda and the, and the minutes. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor with the changes? Opposed, abstained. Minutes pass. Agenda item number six, Chairwoman's announcements. I don't have any announcements this evening. Agenda item seven, reports, Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Faith Marcharia.
Hi Faith.
Hey. So past events, we had Evening of the Arts on November 8th, which was a drama set up by Ms. Krantz and the drama team, and it was really excellent. So if you have time, congratulate them on the great show. Yesterday, the football team won 29 to 16 against Air High School. The cross-country team participated in the district, which hasn't happened in several years, and they actually did excellent. A sixth grader, Cassandra Best, was the first pioneer to actually cross the line, but all team members performed admirably. Upcoming events, the Thanksgiving rally will begin next week, and this week we are actually having Spirit Week events, and we decided to include the middle schoolers. This is usually a high school event, but middle schoolers can also dress up, and the announcements are being made in school on the events. The, this leads off to the Thanksgiving game, which is next week, so be ready for that, and make sure you go. It's actually at Bartlett this year, so support our team. And lastly, the band will be performing at the Festival of Given Trees, November 30th, so support them too. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, school committee reports. A, Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. There is no meeting scheduled. However, at our last school committee meeting, I mentioned that November was Literacy Month, and I wanted to take the opportunity to thank our principals and to also enlighten the committee as well as the public of all the literacy events that will be taking place in our school district during the month of November. At West Street School on November 15th will be Family Involvement Day, and that'll include parents and other community members that will read to our students in the cafeteria. And also on November 28th at West Street School, we're going to be having Family Night, which will include various tables and literacy activities, and that'll take place from 6:00 to 7:30. But there will be forums. I believe some of them maybe even had gone holding your child's backpacks today. So if you have children at West Street School, keep an eye out for those. Over at Eastford Road School on November 29th, they will be having their family literacy event called Feeling Big Night, and those will be for kindergarten students and their parents from 6:00 to 7:30. And again, paperwork will go home with the children from there. Over at Charlton Street School, throughout the month of November, we are blessed to have volunteers from Shot Fiber Optic come in and spend their time in participating and reading to the Charlton Street School students through their buddy reading program. On November 28th, Charlton Street School will also host their Family Night, and will have academic games and literacy activities geared towards literacy, and that will also take place from 6:00 to 7:30. And over at the Middle High School, something new will be taking place. We want to try to begin a Read-A-Thon. That probably won't get kicked off till after Thanksgiving break, and we want to try to get some nice prizes and incentives for the kids who do read. And then in March, looking at a declamation contest where students will participate in local contests amongst classes, and then perhaps have a final evening up on stage where they will actually act out a work of literature or a poem or something to that nature. And then finally, in the district, in conjunction with our Curriculum Subcommittee, we're working on creating a literacy compact for parents and teachers and principals to reinforce the importance of literacy in our classroom that will engage both our English-speaking students as well as our English-language learners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. B, Policy. There are no reports or no meetings scheduled, and this evening we'll be doing our third and final reading later on on the 12 policies and voting them in this evening. C, Budget, Facilities, and Transportation. Dr. Domingo?
There's no report. I would like to schedule a meeting for December.
Thank you. D, Collective Bargaining. Mrs. Principay?
Thank you. The Negotiation Subcommittee met with the Southbridge Education Association on the 31st of October, and we worked on the ground rules. And tomorrow night, the 14th, at 5:00 PM, there's a meeting of just our Subcommittee to work on proposals that we will present to the Education Association, and we're working out the next meeting, joint meeting with them, and I believe it will be on the 5th of December. Thank you.
Thank you. And E, Communication, Family, and Community. Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you very much. Again, Mrs. Donovan relayed some of the important literacy and community and family engagement events that are planned for November and going forward. Our Subcommittee will be involved in those as well. I would like to schedule a meeting for the Communication, Family, and Community Engagement Subcommittee for December 3rd. I have not formally done that yet, but I will schedule one for the first week of December. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations, we have A, Annual Progress Report. One, Ms. Ava Mitchell, Associate Commissioner, Mass. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and Dr. Nadine Banda, Plan Monitor, Mass. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the summative report that you're receiving tonight, that Dr. Banda will be speaking to you about, as you know, describes the year in review from 2011 to 2012. It not only summarizes the progress reports that you've received every quarter, but as you know, it reflects on the MCAS data and tries to make sense of why the district received the results that it received, and also allows us to put some things in perspective for our presentation to the Board of Education. So the report that you are, one of the purposes of the report that you've received is to allow the department, and particularly our office, to present to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education an update on Southbridge's progress since being put on the Accelerated Improvement Plan. Another function of this report is it allowed us to reflect on the elements that should be considered as we reviewed and began to, the approval process for this year's Accelerated Improvement Plan. The Accelerated Improvement Plan that your superintendent and his team submitted was accepted by the Department of Education, and we, we do have some enhancements that we're looking to see in that plan in order to make the kind of traction that we, we would like to see Southbridge make this year. But there won't be a need for a formal submittal. This is going to be something that we are working on with your superintendent and feedback sessions, and we'll be coming back to you at the delivery of the next quarterly progress report to say, here's the progress that's been made on the plan, really to update and deepen the activities that make sure that what's happening at the district level that's working is making greater and greater impact at the classroom level. So we're going to segue now to the summary of the annual report, and then after that, if the Chair would like to entertain some questions, then we'll stay around for that.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to reiterate what Ava just said, that this is old news. So this is a summary of the report from last year and does not report on what has happened in the district from September through this time. You'll be getting your first quarterly report probably sometime at the end of January. So again, this is last year. Last year's Accelerated Improvement Plan was based on six issues. Inconsistent curriculum, quality of instruction, and student support programs needed to be addressed. There was a lack of integrated professional development systems. Data was only loosely informing practice. Collaboration was not central to professional practice. Accountability for outcomes was not real, and too few students graduate, and fewer are college and career-ready. So those were the six issues that were identified by the superintendent and his team that were then addressed in the Accelerated Improvement Plan that they wrote. So that's just a, to give you the framework for that plan. Because it took until late in April of 2012 for the district to develop a plan that had the potential to increase student achievement, only foundational components of the plan were implemented, and the district was not able to reach beyond the technical implementation stage of this plan on any of its strategic objectives. I asked the Superintendent what he felt the successes were in the district last year, and he reported on that they were an integrated, that an integrated service model for all students was implemented, that there was a development of a district data team, and consequently, a cycle of inquiry for data analysis, that learning walks were well embedded in practice last year, that there was the establishment of common expectations for both formal and informal administrative observations. I then asked him what the impediments to successful implementation of the plan were, and he felt that they were the following. Resistance to recognizing the implications of a Level 4 rating for the district. The readiness of administrators and teachers to take on such new concepts as data analysis and planning, response to intervention, and the integrated service model. So professional, he felt more professional development had to be done in all three of those areas. He also said that there was a presumption that there were certain systems in existence that actually were not, and those included a thorough curriculum and a strong assessment and data inquiry process. And finally, the recognition, excuse me, the reorganization of the district schools, which occurred late in the, the school year, for this school year, to a configuration with many fewer transitions for students. As you remember, there were three objectives. The first objective was to implement high-quality curriculum and instruction programs to support the achievement of all students. Foundational work was begun in this area. There were curriculum committees that were established in both ELA and Math to begin to align curriculum with the Massachusetts Common Core standards. They begin to, began to identify and purchase supplemental materials to augment the existing math program to bring it up to appropriate standards. They trained all teachers and administrators in the Southbridge Standard, a protocol which defines high-quality instruction for all students, and defined the need for professional development to follow that. The district implemented the structure of an integrated service model for all students. However, only administrators were trained in the Response to Intervention Model of Tiered Instruction last year, and that has begun to change for this year. So teachers have begun the training, and I'll report more on that in my quarterly report that you'll hear in January. And then plans were made to introduce the Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Program, PBIS is what it's generally called, into all schools. They put into place learning walks, which were walks by administrators to look at and report on assess, on students, on, excuse me, instruction in all classrooms. Objective two was to establish a data-driven culture to support and monitor the achievement of all students. Again, only foundational work was achieved last year on this objective. Southbridge had been using the Galileo Benchmark Assessments for the past few years, and that continued last year, but as I reported to you earlier, it was not done with integrity at every school. So those assessment results could not be counted on. Because teachers had not been trained in how to use data to inform instruction, limited information was garnered from the results. A district data team was formed and trained by the DSAC to begin examination on a district level of data. An inquiry cycle was designed, and vetted, and redesigned, and administrators were trained in that inquiry cycle. Achievement Network was hired to begin to do the new benchmark assessments, and they did some preliminary work last spring in the district with teachers and administrators to help them understand the assessment process and how the analysis of data could be useful in planning and teaching. The third initiative under this objective addressed the new education evaluation system. The Superintendent, the Teachers Association President, and the school committee began work of coming to agreement on a new evaluation policy for the district. As of June, the new policy had not yet been notified, had not been negotiated. I understand it's been negotiated, but I'm not sure if it's been ratified at this point, not yet. Objective number three was to provide high-quality professional development programs to support the achievement of all learners. Professional development needs were determined, and limited training was begun last year. Administrators learned how to observe classes for rigorous instruction, how to use the data inquiry model, and they had some training in RTI. Response to Intervention. The teachers received some professional development on how to implement the Integrated Service Model for Special Need Students. Limited training was provided on the co-teaching model. Planning was done to identify PBIS as a system to address social and behavioral issues with students, and to begin to implement that this year. Some very initial work was begun with teachers and administrators on how best to support the learning of English-language learners and students with disabilities. And professional development was begun in several areas, but not deeply implemented in any specific areas. Thus, this objective remained at the early technical implementation stage. As part of our work last year, we looked at progress and performance ratings for the district. ESE Accountability Monitors assigned each district two categories of ratings for each strategic initiative. Process ratings indicate the degree to which the district has implemented and embedded the key practices in a given initiative. Performance ratings describe the results the district has achieved based on the benchmarks in a given initiative, and those generally were student achievement benchmarks. Most initiatives were rated as being at the technical implementation stage and were rated as partially reached performance goals in the performance category. By the end of the year, none of the 12 initiatives were yet at the practice and place stage, and one initiative met the reached performance goals target. The following five initiatives were rated as problematic implementation or at risk as performance goals not reached. Initiative 1.4, which was engage parents and community members to support implementation of the Accelerated Improvement Plan. Initiative 2.3, to implement new supervision and evalu, and the new supervision and evaluation process to support and monitor professional growth. Initiative 2.4, to establish parent and community committees to support and monitor student achievement. Initiative 3.1, to provide training and support in implementing new curriculum units and the assessment cycle. Initiative 3.4, to provide training and support to parents and community partners to promote understanding of all components of the Accelerated Improvement Plan. In the first year of the AIP process, the Southbridge Public Schools did not meet the final outcomes established in its Accelerated Improvement Plan, which were based on student proficiency in ELA and Math. Overall, Southbridge's levels of student proficiency and student growth decreased between 2011 and 2012. A similar pattern was seen in the performance of the high-needs subgroup, excuse me, the high-needs subgroup. Overall proficiency for high-needs students decreased in ELA and in Math. ELA student growth performance was essentially unchanged for the aggregate and for high-needs groups. The district's median student growth performance in Math decreased by nine percentiles in the aggregate and by 10 percentiles for high-needs students. Although the Southbridge Public School District achieved little improvement in student performance or growth, the district took steps to build a foundation and to establish some necessary... some nest, some systems necessary to create a through line from district practice to the classroom level in order to promote student, improve student outcomes. Summary and recommendation: In order to see substantial change in student achievement in the near future, all Southbridge administrators and the school committee need to work together and send a clear and strong message to teachers, to staff, to parents, and to the community that the Accelerated Improvement Plan will drive the work of all employees in the school district. All aspects of the plan need to be implemented with integrity and monitored for accuracy of implementation. The implementation should be evaluated monthly with attention to identifying areas of need. Ongoing data collection that addresses the early evidence and short and long-term outcomes will help keep the district on a strong course of implementation. To implement the Accelerated Improvement Plan effectively, it is our recommendation that the district should complete the curriculum in math and the curriculum in English language arts. That the district should train and hold all teachers accountable for using the new curriculum documents, it's 100% of teachers. The district should ensure that there are embedded practices in all classrooms to ensure high-quality education for all students. That the district should train, implement, and monitor the RTI model for tiers one, two, and three. That the district should train all faculties in the PBIS model to ensure that all students are safe and in orderly classrooms. The district should engage parents and community members in the implementation of the Accelerated Improvement Plan. District should establish a system of data collection, analysis, and informed implementation at both the district level and the school level that is used by every teacher to plan and inform instruction. The district should monitor the data system and hold all teachers accountable for using data to make their teaching more effective. The district should train staff in the new educator evaluation process early in the school year, and that means that ratification needs to occur soon. That the district should create a professional development plan to address all initiatives described in the AIP, and that the district should report regularly to the school committee on all aspects of the Accelerated Improvement Plan. It's only with a unified effort of the school committee, Southbridge Public School employees, and the community that this plan can be successful. We look forward to seeing greater levels of success reached by the district as we continue to monitor the district's Accelerated Improvement Plan in the 2012-2013 school year.
Thank you. Before we have anyone who's asking any questions, I just want to remind everybody on the, all the members have two opportunities to ask your questions on, on the subject this evening. So is there anyone who has any questions this evening? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the speakers. Good evening. Thank you for coming back. You talked about RTI Response to Intervention. For the public, can you please explain what that is and how it relates to the tiers? Because I think we throw a lot of acronyms around, and people just don't know what they are.
I would be glad to do that, but perhaps this would be an opportunity for the superintendent to explain what, exactly how it looks in this district.
The, the RTI process is, is a process, is a regular education initiative that's designed to monitor student performance, and when students are below expectations to inter, to intervene, using some sort of an intervention, and that's where the tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions come in, it, it just depends on the intensity of the intervention, tier one, tier two, or tier three, and maybe the location.
I'm sorry. And what would be some examples of intervention in that?
Could be one-on-one, small group instruction, could be a pullouts kind of program, working on phonics, it could be, just depending on what the student needs. That's in the ELA area. The, then what happens is you progress, monitor those students that are in those interventions to see if they are improving at the rate you expect them to improve, and then you have a decision-making meeting, which we call school-based support teams, that would decide whether the student stays in that intervention or goes, goes to a, another level of intervention, maybe a higher level of intervention, or even be, drops back into a no-intervention kind of situation. So that's a, a brief sketch, but what we'll do is, we'll give you a further, more detailed presentation. We've done this before for the school committee. So we'll give you a, a further one down the road with our curriculum instruction folks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Is it okay to ask more than one question?
Yep.
While you have the floor?
Uh huh.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you both for coming. The first question that I had, Dr. Bonda, under your discussion, on, for me, it's on page four, I don't know if you were reading from the same report, it's under your progress and performance rating section. You had listed that by the end of the year, none of the 12 initiatives were yet at the practices and place stage, and one initiative met the reached performance goals target. And my question is, which initiative met that target?
I don't have that in my notes. Yeah, so, so I, we, we don't have that in front of us, but we don't have that information in front of us, it would be in the last quarterly progress report. So the, the purpose of the, of that summary, being general, is to explain to the Board of Education that basically, the level of implementation of this plan is really technical, they began some steps, but it's not yet at the place where there's fidelity of implementation across the district.
Okay. So if I went back to the report that you gave the last time you would hear, then that target?
Right.
Would be there, and I could find it out there?
Right, sorry, we're trying not to be too redundant in our summary.
Okay.
And if you need another copy of that, we could supply you with a.
I try to have it somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to confirm that the, the data that you based your overall proficiency and growth on, were you looking at our spring 2012 MCAS scores? Is that the data that that's coming from?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I had the right numbers.
Which I might add is why you didn't get the summative report earlier, because we were waiting for the analysis of those results.
For the numbers to come out. Okay. Thank you very much. Another question that I had was, you didn't mention it tonight, but it was imparting, part of my reading of your report. You mentioned that our administrators will be examining new world-class instructional designs and assistance. It's the acronym WIDA for Standards in English Language Learners. I had never seen or heard of that before, and I didn't know if you explained to me what that was.
Yeah. So, so that's brand-new, coming from the department, but your superintendent's well-versed in it, so do you, you want to take this one?
I would probably defer to our Director of ELL to, to explain it, but what I'll do is, is have Dr. Jordan give a presentation on WEADA. We did this last year again, before you came on board.
Okay.
Basically, what it is, is the old way of, of, of training teachers to work with ELL students is changing to a new format, a new, a new, a new way of doing things. And WEADA is the acronym that they use, and it's, it's used all over the country. So I, I wish I was more well-versed in it, I'm become, I'm learning from Dr. Jordan. So what we'll do is defer that to Dr. Jordan and have her do a presentation on it for you, more in detail than, than the ladies can do tonight. But really, suffice it to say, it's going to change the way we train our teachers.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess I just want to end with a final comment. Those of you who are listening tonight, and the people that, fortunate like us that had the other report ahead of time, I look at this as almost a turning point for our district in the sense that we have come so far to get from ground zero, and we're pretty much still at the technical implementation stage. I think that we need to now look at this as, this is the point where we need to turn the corner and start putting practices into place. And it cannot just be a few people, it needs to be Mr. Elia Superintendent guiding this district, it needs to be our principals, it needs to be us as a school committee, it needs to be our teachers, it needs to be parents, it needs to be the community. And I feel that when I ran for this seat, I ran because I knew that our district was in a tough spot, and a lot of work had been done, but there was still a lot of work that needed to be done. And I just feel that while I have the floor, I want to just refresh everybody's memory of why we're here, and I know you know it, but we have to ma, remain focused, that it is our main purpose for student achievement. For these mothers sitting out there tonight, we need to make sure that our schools are safe, that our principals are on top of things, that everything is provided that these kids need, what our teachers need. As a school committee, it is our job to provide, to put the policies in place, give our, our district the resources that it needs so that achievement can be achieved and maintained. And this is a starting point, and I just want to say, politics, put it aside, drama, put it aside, personalities, put it aside. The time has come for our kids, and every single child in this district deserves the best education that we up here say we can provide. So I urge everybody to sit up here to just listen, do our job, don't do a job that's just do, that a job that is good enough. We've done good enough, and here we still sit. Please, let's get a unified effort. School committee, school employees, community, do a job that's exceptional, and I thank you both for your input and your help with that. Thank you.
Any other questions this evening? Mrs. Prince-Peng?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I believe this would go through you to the superintendent. Another acronym, acronym, the PBIS, which is the Positive Behavior Interventions and Support. Could you expound on that a little, because we talk about training all the faculties?
It actually builds upon the, the existing program, the Peace Builders Program, and it takes it to another level of actually proactively teaching appropriate behavior to students and reinforcing that in a positive way, and trying to be positive in the way you phrase things in the classroom, as a teacher, and the way we phrase things to students when we, when we do monitor behavior. It's, it's a, a mindset that takes you away from punishment into reinforcement of positive behavioral interventions. It's a program that came out of Chicago many, many years ago that I've implemented in two of my high school buildings, and, that I was the principal of, and then in the district, these two districts, and I think it takes, the Peace Builders Program, and just builds up to it, up above it. So I think it's a, a program that can be adapted to age levels, and allows students to, to understand that, that there's appropriate ways to behave in different settings. It's appropriate to behave one way on a, on a playground, but a different way in the cafeteria, a different way in the classroom, a different way in the hallway, so we actually proactively teach the behaviors.
And have we started the training with our, our teachers yet?
We have trained some coaches, and starting to put teams together in the buildings, the, the building principals have assigned PBIS teams to their buildings, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you ladies for coming this evening, appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Presentation B, overview of the 2011-2012 school year MCAS results and first round of interim assessments from October 2012. Ms. Amy Allen, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Give me to say goodbye, then. Good evening. Again, I apologize for receiving this presentation late to the school committee. As I said before, if you have any questions outside of this meeting, I'm more than happy to meet with anybody and, and discuss those, or answer any questions or concerns that you may have after this presentation. I'll try to be brief, there's 35 slides, I'm going to try to zip through them. I wanted to give you all the information. So we're going to start with some headlines, as you.
Amy, if I could, if I could interrupt, just before you start.
Yep.
First of all, I appreciate you working on this so hard, but because the school committee got it late, and we'll go through it tonight, and if it's to the, it's set to the will of the school committee, they can go through questions tonight, or we can come back to the next meeting after they had a chance to absorb it, look at it, and, and ask any questions, if, if that would work, whichever way they want to deal with it tonight. Thank you.
So as you know, we've been working with Achievement Network, and they have been working with us on, on scheduling assessed standards for English and mathematics in grades two through eight. They also worked with us at the beginning on some of the MCAS data, and these are some of the headlines, these are some of the major things that, as an administrative team, that we came up with when looking at the MCAS data, and we've looked at it a lot since we received it. 6% of our LEP, that's the Limited English Proficient Students, and our Special Education Students, are above proficiency in either subject. Less than 50% of the total student population is at or above proficiency. And in grades five through seven, there were no Special Education Students who were proficient or advanced in either ELA and mathematics. I went through each of the grades, just to give you a brief of the ELA and the math. As you can see, there are more students that are in warning and needs improvement than in proficient or, or advanced, although in the grade three, we do see a rise in the proficiency in English Language Arts. In grade four, they seem to take a, a slight dip. We have more students in warning and needs improvement in both ELA and math than we do in the proficient or the advanced. In grade five, they also take the science MCAS, and as you can see, this, the warning and needs improvement in all three subjects are higher than the proficient or advanced in the three subject areas in the grade five. In grade six, in the math, we take a big dip in the mathematics warning, but we do go up a little bit in the advanced area in the mathematics in grade six. Again, in grade seven, we see a, a gap in the math, and that was one of the headlines. The middle school math is an area that we need to work on, and at the end of this, I will tell you some of the things, the initiatives that we're taking to improve these scores. In grade eight, this is one of the highlights. We do see a great improvement in the ELA in grade eight, as you can see, the proficient is over 50%, and the science is starting to come up as compared to last year. We still see that, that warning in math is still high in the eighth grade, it is an issue at the middle school. In grade 10, we see a great improvement in the ELA in proficient and advanced, and we kind of see it evening out in the math. The warning and needs improvement is almost equivalent to the warning, to the proficient and advanced in math at the grade 10 level. So for all grades, all grades that take the MCAS test, which is grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and 10, these are the ELA, I'm sorry, this is 2011 ELA and 2012 ELA, and this is the comparison data. So though we did go up in the warning for ELA, the proficient remained the same, the advanced went down a little, so we do need work. This year has not been anything profound for us. All grades for math, again, we see the blue is the 2011, and the green is the 2012. Again, we're not seeing the results that we need to see there either. This is something that just shows, like, the 10 districts that are the most similar to us as far as the number of students, the total enrollment, special pops, and if you look, Watertown is the highest out of all of those, the highest performing. We have a 68.3 low-income level, a 19% sped level, 11.7 ELL level, and our 2012 MCAS proficient or higher scores are what you see there in orange across the board. So there is a discrepancy between us and the highest performing district out of the 10 that are most similar to us as far as demographics, et cetera. The good news, we are working with ANET, and using the assessment process that they have provided for us, we are addressing each of these weaknesses. we are addressing each of these weaknesses in MCAS. These are the scores that rate the performance levels. I won't go through every one of those. You've got the packets. I'm just going to do a quick review of this. This is our first A1, this is our first assessment for ELA for the three schools. Again, it's only grades two through eight, so when it says Southbridge Middle High School, it's only six, seven, and eight, and then the district. So we do see some real hope in the ELA grades that are here. Also, the, the students that are on the yellow, when we talked about the before and after school programs, these are the kids that we're trying to address. Those kids that are on the bubble, the kids that we can move into that proficient and advanced. This is our math. And again, we see Charlton Street is leading the way with, with 34% of students in proficient advanced overall. Again, the middle school, there is, there is a definite need to address the sixth through eighth grade math. This is ELA by grade, the three through eight, and then the district at the end. Again, the eighth grade English, we see some great strides being made there in eighth grade English. Also, in fourth grade, we see a great spike in the, the English ELA. So areas of urgency, 31% of the students in ELA were in warning. Third grade ELA, we definitely need to address and look at what's going on in third grade ELA. The celebrations, overall performance is higher in ELA than in math. So we're making strides in ELA. Fourth and fifth grade are doing well in both ELA and math. And we see a strong performance in the eighth grade ELA. Math by grade, again, you see exactly the trend I've been discussing with the MCAS. It's the same, the Achievement Net is showing the same. Seventh and eighth grade math, we see a dip in the proficient and advanced scores. And particularly in seventh grade, we see that the warning, which is the two red, are higher than the other grades. So 44% of students are in warning in math overall. Seventh and eighth grade math are a, a big issue. Our celebrations are that we have very strong performance in the fourth grade math. And 27% of the fifth graders are in the needs improvement high. So they're on the bubble. They're real close. We can get them to that proficient level. This is a slide that's actually from Achievement Network. And what this shows is our potential for scoring on the MCAS. So Charlton Street, our CPI for the spring was 69.6%. That's where our students needed to be. And 72.9 is our 2013 CPI goal. This is where we need to be for our next MCAS. And the light blue is what it looks like we're at by the first ANET test. So it looks like we're at 62.27% in ELA at Charlton Street, which is not far off from that 72.9% CPI goal for 2013. West Street is about 58.42, which is 72.9. It's not a huge gap. The middle high school, which again is only grades six through eight, they're at 60.99, and they need to get to 72.9. Overall, as a district, we're at 60.63, and we need to get up to that 72.9 CPI. So again, areas of urgency, third grade ELA. West Street ELA, our celebrations are the eighth grade ELA and the Charlton Street ELA. Same for math. We're looking at the 2012 CPI, and the 2013 is the middle. That's where we want to go. Charlton Street is not far. West Street's got a little bit farther to go. Sixth through eight, again, in math. We, we've got work to do there. Excuse me. As a district, we, we've got work to do in math. That's our focus for this year. Seventh and eighth grade math, celebrations are fourth grade math and our Charlton Street math. Excuse me, 2012, 2013 ELA performance. I just wanted to show you some of our sub-populations. Our free and reduced lunch, which is termed our low-income students for MCAS purposes. They're 29% proficient and advanced. Our limited English proficient, our ELL students are only 3% proficient and advanced. Our special ed are 6%, and overall as a district, we're 34%. So we definitely need work with our ELL and special education students to really help them bridge that gap. Same with math. You see a very similar trend. The free and reduced lunch students are not far off the district, but the limited English proficient and the special ed students are, are low with, with the hot, very high warning. Again, that's where we need to focus. And this is just a, a graph showing you the ELA of all students versus the LEP students in grades three through eight. And it's a bit shocking. You see the green for all students and then the green for the LEP students. There's quite a gap there. Area of urgency, 71% of students are in warning in ELA. Celebrations, fourth grade and eighth grade. Overall, stronger performance in ELA and math for our LEP students. Again, same trend. It's similar with, with math for the LEP students, all versus the LEP. Though overall as a district, math is our lower area of performance. 83% of LEP students are in warning in math. But the celebration is that fifth and eighth grade students are making greater progress. This is our special education students. On the left, you have the ELA all students. On the right, you have the ELA special ed students. Again, it's a similar trend to our LEP students. They're underperforming on the MCAS in all grades, particularly sixth grade. So 73% of our students are in warning. Third, fourth, and eighth grade are doing a little bit better. Overall, stronger performance again in ELA than math. And this is the special ed math. On the left is all. On the right is our special education students. Again, seventh and eighth grade, we don't have any students in proficient or advanced for special ed and math, which is rather troubling. 79% of students are morning. Middle school math is an issue, but our celebrations are that fourth grade is making greater strides. I know this is not the best MCAS report. However, I would like to address at this point some of the initiatives that are taking place to address some of these findings. Excuse me. At a previous meeting, we talked about the before and after school program that's being funded by Title I. And that is specifically to address these issues at the elementary level in grades two through five, to address some of these deficiencies in both special ed and ELL. And those students that we talked about that are on the bubble in that yellow area. Mr. Wigan and I are, are working on getting some coaching at the middle school for ELL and math through the Title II Carryover Grant to provide those middle school teachers with some extra coaching in that area because that is our lowest area. As a district leadership team, we've talked about teacher, teacher observations. We see some really bright spots, and we know who the teachers are in those grade levels and those subject areas. And we really want other teachers to go in and start observing what good practice looks like. What are the things that are happening in that classroom that are helping those kids to reach those levels of achievement? And we'd like to see that done overall. We're also getting ready to put together, myself and Mr. Hoffman at the middle school, restarting Project Success, which was a, a program that addressed some of our ELL and low-income students at the middle school level. And it did address the academic MCAS scores. So we're going to be working on getting that going again. They just put that grant out again on the DESE website, so we're restarting that. In addition, the whole ANET process is aiding all of us because we're looking at data in a different way. We're looking at these scores, and we're really seeing who is accountable and, and what's happening with these students. Where before you just get a score and no fingers were ever pointed at anybody, but now everybody has to look at these scores. They know who those kids are and who they belong to, and they know that they are responsible to make sure that those students reach another level of achievement. And they're having data meetings, and they're discussing it, and they're doing action plans, and they're reteaching. And we're walking through, and we're seeing it happen. And it's a new process, and it's going to take time. I'm not going to say these scores are going to change overnight. They're not. But I do think that with Achievement Network's help and with, with the Department of Ed encouraging us to use a data inquiry model, I do think that we're going to see growth in our students. It won't be overnight, but it, it will happen. And I know that the teachers are working very hard to make sure that, that that occurs as our, the entire curriculum department. So, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or as Mr. Ely said, I, I could address them at another time.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has questions at this time? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Allen. Through, to you through the chair. How many students are participating in the before and after school programming? How many students are taking advantage of that?
I'd have to double check with each of the principals. I'm not exactly sure of what that number is. I'm thinking it's about...
How much was that? I'm sorry.
So we've got about 200 students.
That are participating in that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions this evening? Dr. D'Amico?
Just a quick, not, not all that philosophical question. I'm looking at one of the graphs you presented, and you indicated that we should be excited by the strong performance in fourth grade, for grade math and fourth grade English. It's a page ten, so that would be slide about 20. When I look at the graph, yes, it is slightly higher in advanced and proficient as it is across other grades. But I would like you to reassure me that that cannot possibly be something that we should be satisfied with.
No, I, no, Dr. D'Amico, I agree 100%. But what we're trying to do is, as we present this, especially to the teachers who are really working hard, we, we don't want them to feel beat down over these scores because it doesn't all have to do with, you know, what's going on in the classroom. It has much to do with it, but there are other factors involved. But we just, we want them to see the things that are happening that are not good in the district. But we also want them to see that there are areas where we see sparks. We see glimmers, and, and we want them to focus on that and, you know, at least feel a little bit good about those pieces. So no, I agree with you. It's, it's, this is not a complete celebration here, but we, we do try to highlight some of the small, small things where, that we can feel good about.
One more question. Was there, was there a school that was meeting the, closing the gap goals out of five schools that we had last year?
You mean as far as like CPI and so forth?
Yeah.
Yes, the high school.
Okay.
The, yes. The high school is a Level 1 school.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none at this time. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10. Report of the Superintendent?
Yeah, two items. I received a letter when I got back a day or two ago from the state, from NEASC, the Accreditation Board for NEASC, which stated that they have now removed us from the probation based on the fact that we opened the new middle high school. If you'll remember, the, the, the old high school was on probation under NEASC accreditation pending this, this opening. So very positive bit of news is they are no longer on probation. They're on track to be evaluated in 2014 for their NEASC reaccreditation. And the second thing is, I'd like to introduce to you the candidate that I'm recommending for the Director of People Personnel Services. He's here this evening, Colleen Culligan. Colleen, if you'll stand up. Colleen comes to us from, most of you have met her through the interview process. Colleen comes to us from about 15 years in the Worcester City School System with a good background in guidance and special education. And I'd just like to introduce Colleen to say a few words, if you would, just briefly. And then if you have any questions for her, certainly, I know most of you have met her already.
Thank you, Mr. Ely, and good evening. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Ely, to the interview panel, and to the school committee for welcoming, welcoming me to the Southbridge School Community. I'm gratified. I can hear this evening that there is a tremendous amount of focus and concentration and a strong sense of urgency around what Ms. Donovan called a turning point for the schools. I'm excited to be a part of that foundation. I hope to be a, a strong contributing member to the district leadership team. And I'm very encouraged that there is a tremendous effort to work very hard on closing the achievement gap. And in particular, I have also taken a good, hard look at the special education data and compared it to some of the other aggregate data that you've seen here this evening. And it's clear that we have a lot of work to do. But I'm also very heartened to know that there is a strong emphasis on working together, unified effort with the community as well, and the parents who are here this evening. I want to say thank you for coming and giving us feedback, and I hope to work with you in the future as well. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you.
I could lose my report.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mrs. Donovan?
I just had a question for Mr. Ely. I just was wondering if you had replaced the assistant principal at the middle high school?
Yes, but she's not here this evening because they had their, their conferences up there this evening.
Okay.
So we'll bring her and introduce her to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, Report of the, of Director of Finance and Operations, the financial report for fiscal year 2013. Mr. Wiggins?
Yes, you have your first monthly financial report before you. It takes a little longer to create the first one because we want to make sure we have got everybody in their place. It also, obviously, the further out you are from June 30th, it's a little trickier to do projections. When you look through the detail, one of the reasons, particularly in the salary lines, they'll look a little funky is because the expenditure report this is matched up against in KVS is the original budget, not the recast budget. Well in advance of your next meeting, you'll receive a request for transfers to align the KVS budget with the recast budget. And then future reports will look a lot more sensible to you. The bottom line is I'm projecting a fund balance of $23,696.68 for the public in November. That is next to nothing. And I have expressed several concerns to the committee in my narrative. There are a few unanticipated special ed education expenditures that we've had. Nothing that we can handle so far, but again, the year is early, so I get nervous. We have yet to say, see how the winter is going to play out. Last year, we were very fortunate with a mild winter, which started with a snowstorm in Halloween. This year, we started with a super storm on Halloween and followed it with a nor'easter a week later. So obviously, I'm a little sensitive to what may happen. And by the way, for the public, I have to apologize for my earring tonight, but I'm hopefully waiting for a phone call from a candidate for a position we're trying to fill. So my apologies for looking a little strange tonight on TV. It is the first year of a new middle high school, and while we did receive projections from engineers and consultants on what our utility and energy costs would be over the winter, it's, it's first year of operations, so I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. And so again, I tend to be conservative with those types of things. And then finally, the other big thing, again, in that whole utilities-energy situation, is we've projected not only reduced energy costs at Cole Avenue, but obviously with a tenant coming in that is going to offset some of those utility costs. That's all projected part of the budget. But depending on how winters play out and things play out, that's something that's still out there as well. So again, what I mentioned to the committee in the narrative that's before you tonight, we're not putting on a budget freeze, and, and, you know, the principals actually probably haven't even seen the email yet. But we're just asking the principals again to, you know, take a second look at any expenditures that they're putting forward to me in purchase orders. If I have some questions, if Eric has some questions, you know, we may be asking him questions just to make sure on them. But again, so far, everything is in place, and we're on target.
Any questions? Dr. D'Amico?
Just for you to, to Terry. Terry, you're, you're projecting instructional salaries, and I'm talking about projection, that we will end up spending more than half a million dollar more on instructional salaries by the end of the year. Can you explain that?
That's because it's not aligned to the recast budget, and it doesn't, you're not taking into account there are other salary lines that are offsetting that, most notably in the salary adjustment account, which is the very first line, which is some $437,000. That essentially is not in... that essentially is not incurred, is transferred into some of those lines. There's also, if you recall, when we created the budget, there was a number of, I want to say it's about $200,000 worth of salaries, approximately, more or less, that are offset by tuitions for the new special ed program.
So, this would in essence represent about nine new positions if we averaged the salaries as reported on the website at about $60,000?
Well, is, there's a number of moving around of positions, yes.
And this, most of it?
There are.
Again, not...
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Not reading through the details, but the, the closest number that can accommodate for covering that kind of projection, right, is going to come from our first, very first line item?
That is a, a big chunk of it. And the other chunk of it comes out of savings and tuitions. But there are other savings as well, from other salary lines.
Madam Chair, I, I would like to discuss this further, but I think maybe we should schedule that for our December meeting.
Okay.
And if appropriate, we might want to call the committee, meeting of the whole, if there is such interest. If not, I would be happy to just have a subcommittee meeting.
Okay. Is there anyone else with questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Through you to Mr. Wiggins. I apologize for my naeete on this, but I, just so that I understand what you mean by fund balance. After everything's been paid, this is the money that we have left to play with, so to speak.
My apologies, yes. In, in fund accounting parlance, basically, the fund balance is a nonprofit's term for, did you have a profit or loss at the end of the year? Obviously, if it's positive, you have a, if you will, you're turning back money to the town for free cash. If it's negative, that's not a good thing, okay? Obviously, we don't ever have a negative. We will never have a negative. I have never had a negative in 23 years of doing this. So, right now, we're projecting a positive fund balance of $23,000 and change.
All right, I think that was just when I was, when I was going through my packet. I think in my mind, I thought this was, that you had done the year-end of the school year and that this was the amount you were looking to give back to the town, but that, I was incorrect in thinking that.
No, no, this is projecting for June 30th, 2013.
Okay. All right. And second of all, I didn't know if it's appropriate, you know, kind of in line with Dr. D'Amico was saying, is it possible to provide more of a regular income expense statement to the committee, whether it be a monthly or quarterly?
These will, these will come monthly. The first one takes longer to get established simply because, and particularly this year, because we opened up a new school, we moved around staff between, well, actually, four schools when you get right down to it, because we not only moved around in our three elementary schools, we actually had a couple of staff that moved from the elementary level up to the middle high school level. So, and then there's a normal transition. And then the process, because that's obviously the biggest part of the budget, is the process as we literally go through and the payroll manager and myself go through it with every single person, and we make sure that we have that person not only at the right amount and make sure we've got them, if it's a teacher in the right step and column, if it's a support person, that we have them not only in the right hourly, but we know how many hours they're working.
Right.
So, it's, it's quite an extensive process. And then you were new, so you weren't quite part of the process, but a number of the account codes changed this year. So, there's also some moving around to account changes, and that's why I say that looks kind of weird because it's using some of the original budget account structure.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number 12, school committee actions. A, vote to approve a donation of $500 from Savers Bank for English Language Learner Services. I have a motion by Mrs. Principay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Donovan. Any discussion? Seeing none. Can we have a roll call, Max?
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. B, vote to appoint the Director of People Personnel Services or PPS. Do I have a motion? Yes, Mrs. Principay.
I would like to amend this motion to include the name Colleen Mora Culligan.
All right, we have a motion to amend the motion to put in the name Colleen.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion on the amended motion? Okay, we'll have a roll call on the amended motion to add Colleen.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, we now have to vote on the motion, to vote to appoint the Director of People Personnel Services, Colleen Culligan. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
By Mrs. Principay, seconded?
Second.
By Mrs. Donovan. Any questions, discussion? See, Dr. O'Leary?
For my own application, could you give me a brief summary of the responsibilities of that position?
Oh, you have an outline in your packet?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that has that full description. Um, I don't think I need to read through the whole thing.
It's okay, thank you.
But you do have that.
For the rest of the public. Thank you. I already knew it. Wanted it for the public.
If you'd like to read yours, you can, to the public?
I'm all good.
All right. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And just so you know, if the public does want information on this, we'll have it posted on the website or to be available in the offices if anyone would like to look at this description. Thank you. C, vote to approve the reassignments of all school committee subcommittees. I was asked to add another member to each committee. I passed out the subcommittees, so this is what we're voting on this evening. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mrs. Principay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. D, move that the Southbridge School Committee vote to ratify the Icon copier lease contract number 101-8514 dated June 24th, 2009, and now owned by RICO USA Incorporated, and to recommend that the Southbridge Town Council also ratify said lease. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Mrs. Principay?
Through you to Mr. Wiggins. Could you expound on this a bit?
Yeah, if I can, if I can, I'll take both motions up together because they kind of work together. As you know, I've been kind of working with RICO for several months, actually, going back to last spring with a former rep who's no longer our rep at my request. Long story short, we couldn't come to a resolution on a way to redo these leases so that they could be three-year leases and the school committee could approve them by itself. So, basically, this is a first of a two-step process. The first step would be for you to ratify the original leases, which are these two motions tonight, and then these would go to town council, for town council to ratify them in their original five-year form, which is required under state law. I don't think there's going to be any problem. I was trying to make it simple so that we could do this in one step. Unfortunately, RICO's lawyers got involved, and lawyers make things complicated, and it's just going to be simpler and quicker this way if we just do it in a two-step process. So, what I'm asking you tonight is to ratify these original documents, which were never brought before you, and then I will give them, I've apprised the town manager of the situation. He doesn't think there'll really be any significant issue with the town as well. There's absolutely no budget impact. There is not one penny's change in what you will pay out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Wiggins, I just have a couple of questions. In your memo number four, you said that in one case, no true lease has been produced, and you've shown that. Has there been any penalty to the district thus far with us not having a lease in place?
They have not produced a lease document yet. That's why the second motion is worded slightly differently. It'll basically allow me to sign a retroactive lease. We're looking for it. We have nothing other than this document. Because the company's out of business, I guess I would say that the company formerly known as Icon sometimes played a little fast and loose with documents, and this appears by both RICO and ourselves as perhaps one of those cases. But again, it's now, this is a couple of years old, and the gentleman involved is no longer with them, and that's how these things can happen. So, again, the machines are here. They're good machines. We're using them. We don't, we're not trying to get out paying anything, never were. We're simply trying to do this in a lawful way. I'm trying to put the town accountant and the school district in a situation where they can pay these in a lawful fashion, because without this kind of ratification, the town accountant really is in a situation where she's not supposed to pay these, and in fact, they get turned back. We have to go through a process of getting new equipment. That could be our US, not to mention leave us within a lurch for a period of time. So, I think this is the simplest, cleanest solution, and so I would ask you folks to take this first step of ratifying and approving each of these motions just before you.
I just had a couple more. Thank you. My second question was, is it normal that we usually lease these type of machinery for five years or is three years the norm?
Oh, no. No, no. You will never see me propose to you a five-year lease.
Okay.
Never, ever.
All right, thank you. And then finally, part of your motion, in the second part of your, the second part of your second motion, that if no original lease document can be obtained, you're authorized to sign a retroactive. So, I just wanted to make sure it's quite unlikely that you'll find that lease. Is that why we're in this problem?
Well, I never say never or always, but I, I think at this point in time, they've been actively looking. We've been actively looking. We've even looked through some of the milroom documents, which is a daunting task, and it doesn't seem likely we're going to come up with it, but they are still looking.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
No.
No. Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
No.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yeah.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
Motion passes. E, move that the Southbridge School Committee vote to ratify the Icon copier lease entered into on June 14th, 2010, for seven RICO MP 6,001 copiers and two RICO MP 8,001 copiers in amount of $1,865.95 per month, with said lease to end on June 14th, 2015. Be it further moved that if no original lease document can be obtained, the Director of Finance and Operations is authorized to sign a retroactive lease document with the above terms, if such lease is ratified and approved by the Southbridge Town Council. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Principay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. D'Amico?
No.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
No.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number 13, unfinished business. A, we have the third reading and vote to approve the updated policies. Do I have a motion?
Did you say this wasn't on the agenda last night? It wasn't on the agenda card, so you can't do it tonight. You can't have a second reading on it. Is that right?
I think it was just out of the minutes.
This was our agenda. Did you add it?
No, I wrote it tonight, so what I was doing was...
It wasn't on, all right, I guess on the last agenda, we did not have one of the, one of...
Number 12.
Number 12 on, for our second reading, so we have not had a second reading for item number 12 yet, so we would have to omit 12 and do the third readings and vote to approve the first 11 policies. Do I have a motion? I make a motion. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
No, it's not on the, you're basically move these 11.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. D'Amico.
Uh, can, can you state the motion, please?
The motion is to have the third reading and vote to approve the updated policies. It would be one through 11. We cannot do 12. It was not on last, the last meeting's second reading.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to again state for benefit of the public that the policy on executive sessions needed to be updated to comply with mass law, mass state law, as did the nondiscrimination policies, which now require the insertion of gender identity as a protected class. And probably one of the most significant and most extensive changes was made to our professional staff hiring policy, which in the past had basically stated that the district would strive to attract, secure, and hold the highest qualified personnel for all positions. It now basically requires that there will be a representative screening committee established, and that though the administrators finally say in determining who would be hired, it was expected that the screening committee's input would be a factor in the decision. Again, for those positions where the hiring authority rests with the school committee, a representative screening committee may be established by the school committee, or the school committee may direct the superintendent to establish a screening committee to assist the superintendent in making his recommendation. So, that would be a pretty significant change. Trying to think if anything else. The student-to-student harassment policy's been updated to include, for harassment to include texting, blogging, or other technological methods that are now in place. And, I'm trying to think. And that's it, because the community use of school facilities is only in its second reading for tonight. I just wanted the public to be aware of those, some of those changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion for, to have the third reading and to vote to approve the updated policies, one through 11. Maybe we would like to waive the actual reading of all these policies and just vote to approve them.
Do I have a motion? So, you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion to waive that, that third reading.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. So, now, we have a motion on the table to waive the reading, the third reading of one through 11. Can I have a second? Is there any discussion on that?
To waive, to waive the reading, but vote to approve the policies?
Right.
And, and knowing that these policies are available to be read at the central office and hopefully on our website.
All right. Max, do you have that motion for us?
The motion is to waive the third reading and approve the policies, one through 11. I guess my only question is, why are you only doing 11? Are you doing 11 only because you only have 11 on the last?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Max.
You're only doing the first 11? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, one through 11.
Okay.
One through 11.
Max, number, number 12 was left off the agenda at the last meeting, so this can only be the second reading tonight, so it can't be voted on.
Oh, right, okay. So, we're leaving it off for the final approval?
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the motion to waive the third reading and to vote the approval of the policies, one through 11? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay? Yes?
Yeah.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. So, the motion passes. We will have the item number 12 on the next meeting. It's not on the agenda, so I think we have to do that, the second reading. Don't we have to do that at the next meeting?
I don't know. It's up to you.
Marielle, excuse me just a moment.
I would have, I would include this as being the second reading. I don't think it has to be on another agenda, number 12, to be, that's my opinion.
So, the confusion that we're having is item number 12 hadn't had a second reading at the last meeting, so tonight would actually be the second reading for item number 12. So, I would actually need a motion to waive the second reading on item number 12 this evening. Do I have a motion to waive that reading?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? A second to waive the reading of item number 12, the second reading of item 12?
So moved. Let me second. I'm sorry. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call on that, Max?
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item number 14, new business. Dr. D'Amico?
Madam Chair, if I, if I can go back to unfinished business.
Oh, sure. Sorry.
I think, I, I see that, you know, both parents that have addressed the school committee at the beginning are still here, and I would appreciate if maybe the superintendent has some reassurance for these parents, some explanations, or, or anything else that he might think would be appropriate with their concerns.
The, obviously, I was out of town last week with the MAS/MASC conference, but I have spoken to the principal, the administrators in the building, and been assured that all student discipline is handled, will be handled according to the Student Code of Conduct, and that they are on top of these, these kinds of issues. And their nurses handle any incidents where a student is injured. So, and they're both trained RNs, school nurses. So, the, I can certainly assure them that the, anybody, all parents, that we have a police presence in the building. The school committee, in the budget, has certain amount of money for police presence, as well as the police department having a budget for that. Sometimes, the school resource officer may not be in the building, but they are, you know, assigned to that building. So, I can certainly assure you that our, our staff and our administration are dealing with these things as they pop up and dealing with them as quickly as they possibly can.
I would just have a follow-up question, and again, it's not as much for me as it is for the parents. Is there any need that we, as a school district, should be apologizing for anything that has happened, as far as you know?
Not as far as I know.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lozo?
I, I, I'm totally baffled. I've been on the school committee quite a while. Here is a student that gets hit. The parent comes to us and says, "My son was hit." Ambulance ride to the, to the hospital. The police were there. The resource officer wasn't in the building. The principal was nowhere to be found. Then, the parent jumps in the ambulance, goes to the hospital, gets no response from any type of administration, for whatever reason. We turn around, and then we get a no trespassing order put on the mother. The person that actually did the bashing of one of the sons, and we put, and I know we are policymaking body, I've written, that speech been read to me already, we put a bully policy in. We put 50 policies in. The problem is, we have went through, and this is a quote-unquote of numerous teachers, the most violent two or three months of their careers at Southbridge Middle High School. Now, I know that's not my job or our job to do that, but when it comes to public service, I cannot put my head in the sand on this one and create a policy for it. This is purely a management issue. And, and I think what we have to do, when we have a communication subcommittee in a community engagement, I look at putting a no trespass order on a parent of the, that has more than one child in the school system as totally not communicating. When a parent walks in and says, "I want to see the principal," wouldn't it be a fair assumption you get to see the principal, or where is the principal? Gang, I got to tell you, this has been a long two or three months. It was, it was nice to hear that, you know, Neas took us out of, for probation, and SHS had the greatest improvement. But with all that good news, we had to overhaul that middle high school only to create the two most violent months of some of the teachers' careers.
Mr. Lozo?
This building's going to implode, okay? And, and I'm not making up any stories. The parents, the staff, the teachers, if Mr. Ely, you're the superintendent, there's no question about it, you've got a job to do. I am looking at this, and this is like someone sleeping at the wheel. Thank you.
Just, just a little bit here. Some of this stuff is, is personal stuff and items, and I think if anyone wants to discuss this with Mr. Ely in his office, I believe he would be, I'm assuming he'd be willing to do that.
Absolutely.
Whether it be with the parents or us as a school committee member, I suggest that the parents involved should call Mr. Ely and set up an appointment. I don't particularly think that this is something that should be out fully at a school committee meeting. This is a business meeting. I know it's unfinished business, and there may be some problems. Every school district has them, but I think this is something that should be aired out in the offices with Mr. Ely, not here in the public view. So, does anyone have, anyone else have any unfinished business regarding the businesses today, or what went on last meeting? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Well, I have, I do have something, but I, I do want to just say this for a minute from a policy perspective. If a child is injured, who is responsible for notification to the parent? It is not in our policy manual, so I'm assuming it is a procedure. And, so the school nurse is responsible for notification?
It's a procedure in the booklets, and it's the nurse's responsibility.
Okay. Like, we can take that up. I have another, a question related to unfinished business, though.
Sure.
Parent survey, is that progressing at all? There was a company that was going to be looking?
Yes. I have a quote on my computer, and I have a conference, teleconference with the sales rep tomorrow from K-12 Insight to finalize that. And we have been working with Ms. Allen and with Mr. Wigan to, to pull money in from different sources to pay for the service. So, I'll be bringing it to your subcommittee with, with the proposal. It's got a lot of capabilities.
Okay.
Mr. Lozo?
Just, just a quick moment. Did everybody receive the letter from the parent? Did all school committee members receive the letter from the parent? I, I asked that question because the content of the turn of events is what was most alarming, and to some of the questions that you asked about the policy. So, and I understand this is, this is a public, a meeting in public, and we are the school committee, and, and we do represent the public. And, and in the past, we've been trying to make it run a certain way where things can't be said in public. Through the chair, to the school committee, I want you to know, I have listened, I've heard, I've talked to the public, and I've talked to a lot of people at that building. I will, from now on, hold press conferences on a regular basis on the issues at this middle high school. I will not bring them to the school committee because it doesn't seem to me that you really want to have a transparent government. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else for unfinished business? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Through you to Mr. Ely. I was just wondering, I hadn't received the weekly Friday report yet, and I didn't know, according to your calendar, when you were going to start doing that.
It'll come out this week.
Okay, thank you.
I was, obviously, last week in, in the conference.
And in addition to that, I know that during your report, sometimes you give us information relative to the AIP, but in light of tonight's discussion, could we have more of a regular information, just on how the AIP is progressing?
Yes, it'll be the, we had this planned for tonight, and then every media, once a month between now and, and the end of the year, you'll get a, a report from me.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It'll also be part of the Friday report.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, moving on to new business. A, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on December 11, 2012, council chambers. Is there any other new business this evening? Mr. Lozo?
Other new business? Just a question to, through the chair, to the superintendent. I didn't want to bring it up while the Boston contingency was here. I thought we should have put our game face on, which I think we did, and, and to move forward. Can you please explain what happened to Mr. Livingston, which was supposed to be our accelerated improvement plan, which concerned me that I heard that he was removed from his position? Is that something that we can hear on that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other new business this evening? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes. I did receive information that the parent-teacher conferences at the middle high school, I, I know they were taking place tonight, and in fact, on our school calendar, that had been the case for the middle school since the calendar was approved last May. However, I do know that several high school parents have expressed concern to me because it was scheduled for tomorrow night, their conferences, and many, well, of the ones that contacted me, I will say, those are the ones I can speak to, said their only notification about parent-teacher conferences was a robo-call today at 9 o'clock. I've got to say that as the chair of the Communication Parent Community Engagement Subcommittee, this, this concerns me greatly. A change like this is significant. It needs to be planned. And I know the next set of conferences occurs during the day in January, but I would hope that information would go home well in advance of, of this. I think this created a hardship for families, and I think it was just fundamentally counterintuitive to parental involvement in the district. So, I wanted to state that. So, that's something we'll probably be addressing at the subcommittee at some point. I also just want to take a moment to say to the public that an awful lot has been going on in the school district, and a lot has been going on in the media. And though we up here as a public body cannot always comment or delve into what's going on for various, you know, legal reasons up on the dais, it is not for a lack of concern on the part of myself, and I'm sure my counterparts up here, as to, or a lack of interest, or a lack of failure to do anything. We, there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes, and will continue to be acted upon based upon concerns that we hear and receive. And I just don't want the public to think that, because when people come up to comment, as I used to do, before I was elected here, and I'd have seven faces staring blankly at me, and I would be like, "What is up with those people? And how come nobody's talking to me, or just thanking me, or saying, 'I understand your frustration.' I want you to know that I understand your frustration. I get it.'" And that I just want you to know that that's where that comes from more often than us just not caring or being concerned. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Dr. D'Amico?
You know, this, this really prompted me, what my colleague Lauren McLaughlin said right now, to make the, the following statement that might contrast what you just heard. This is the public school system. We are not FBI. We are not CIA. Most of the documentation of this district is public, including the budget, including all sorts of documentation, including the salary lines, including everything. And so, there is very little that we can't or should not be talking about in public. And for those reasons, we have executive sessions, and I hope we all respect that. So, there is no reason to believe that we should remain quiet or not address concerns that are real from this community, unless they fall into very, very few categories of collective bargaining or personal data. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lozo?
The discussion tonight brings it full turn. There isn't anybody that, up here, that doesn't care. The thing is, some of us are more transparent, some are less transparent, some feel threatened. When someone says, "If you say anything, I'll sue you," somebody might fall in tend and say, "I've had it." For me, sue me, okay? Because I will stand tall for you, the public. And what has to happen here is, there's a lot of stuff going on in this system that's being shuffled around like a shell game. We must take care of our issues. We are judged not by our mistakes. We are judged not how we fell down. We are judged on how we get up. If there was a mistake or a problem, don't hide it. Let's attack it. Let's do it together. Let's get it solved. This is not the norm in Southbridge right now. I've been on a school committee a long time, and I've experienced the good, the bad, and the ugly, as they say. But what we have to do as, as an administration, as a superintendent of school committee, and most of all, as a community, is to make sure that we solve the problem. We're not solving some of these problems because there's too much paranoia on who's saying what. Let's tackle these issues. Let's do them together. I'm, I'm, I'm ready. But, but for some reason, it doesn't work that way. And that is the comfort level of whatever elected official seems to, what they want to do, and that's okay. That's why we are all diverse group up here, and we believe differently on how things should be handled. But I will be holding press conferences, exposing the stuff in this district, and investigative report, if I have to be that, I'll do that. Let's solve the problems.
Any other new business this evening? Mrs. Principay?
This isn't new. I'm going to go back to the unfinished business and speak to what my colleague just said. I don't think any of us want to run away from the issues, or shuffle the issues, or hide the issues. I will say I did receive the email from Ms. LaBoy, but I can't sit up here and say everything's imploding unless I know the full story, and I don't. And I respect, I, the receipt of your, I respect your email, but I don't know anything on the other side of this. And I'm not going to sit here and judge, and I'm not going to say everything's going to blow up, because I don't know. And, and as a school committee member, our job, besides policy and budget, is, the accountability is our superintendent. That's who we hold accountable, and that's what we need to work with. I cannot, I don't hold the principals, the assistant principals accountable. That's not within my jurisdiction to do that. But it is with the superintendent. But I think it's something that we have to gather all the information first before we just, I can't shoot from the hip. I have to know. That's all I have to say.
Any other new business? Mr. Abrahamson, would you like to speak?
For the sake of openness, I hope that Mr. Lozo will name the teachers who said that this is the most violent time in their career.
At this time, we cannot do that at this meeting. It would break some laws and violations, so...
At one of his press conferences, he'll do that.
Correct. All right. Moving on, you've already had your turn in new business. We have two turns per each. Mr. Lozo?
Unfinished business? Just a comment. If somebody's going to come to the podium during a meeting in public, it's not a public meeting. That's why we put citizens forum first by law. People should not speak during the meeting, but that's, you can, you're the chair. To bring forth the teachers, or the parents, or the, I, I respect these parents right here. They came up, and they're talking to us. They've got documentation. I agree with Marielle and Principay as far as, you know, this is the way it's supposed to work. You read this letter, there's something not right there, okay? And as far as Mr. Abrahamson's comments, with all due respect, I think what we have to do is understand the retribution when you do something like that. And you will hear a lot at my press conferences, and they will be factual, they will be documented. But there are some people in our district, due to retribution, they will not do that But there are some people in our district, due to retribution, they will not do that, because they do not want to get fired, thank you.
Mr. Abrahamson, please. Point of order, what is your point of order? Alright, we're, we're done, thank you, Mr. Abrahamson. Brent Abrahamson.
Southbridge.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with new business for this evening, on, any new business? Anyone else? Seeing none, there is no executive session this evening, we will move for adjournment, do I have a motion for adjournment? Motion made by Mrs. Principay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, second by Mrs. Donovan, roll call, please. No, show of hands, whatever. Bananamas, thank you.